Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 5, 2012, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Before we get into the approval of the meeting agenda, I'm going to turn to Manager Neil. We've got a couple of new employees that he would like to introduce.
We do, and I want to call up Brian Olson and Ari Klugman. We'll hear from Brian first. Brian is our new Director of Public Works, and I'd like him just to introduce himself and tell you a little bit about where he's been before he got here. And then Ari Klugman is the new intern in the city manager's office, and she'll do the same. So, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words about myself. I went to school at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, graduated in 1992, and since I've been working for the city of New Brighton, I worked there for eight years. As I worked there, I also got involved in the fire department and have been a member of the New Brighton Fire Department since 1994. After I left New Brighton, I was hired at the city of Ramsey for a period of 12 years and was ultimately the Director of Public Works overseeing facilities, utilities, engineering, streets, and parks at that city. I've now been working for the city of Edina for a full week, and I've fully enjoyed myself. I've seen a whirlwind of activity. Everyone's been extremely welcoming, and I really look forward to the opportunity to work with you in the near future.
Yeah, well, thanks, Brian. Welcome. Any questions or comments for ... All right, welcome. Thanks. Look forward to having you working with us.
I just pray that it's another low-snow year.
Yeah.
Ari Klugman, I'm going to be working in the city manager's office as the administrative intern. I am currently studying at the University of Kansas, and I'm in my second year at the university, which is a full-time internship. The first year was a part-time internship where I was working in Johnson County, Kansas, for the county government in their manager's office. So, I got some good experience there, and I'm very excited to be back from Minnesota. I'm a Hopkins resident originally, and I went down to the Minnesota State University for my undergraduate degree. So, I'm excited to be here and learn.
Ari, welcome. We'll see you around this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there an approval or a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Second.
We move to second, and we approve the form of the meeting agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. I would like to remove items 4C, 4G, and 4L, please.
All right, anyone else?
No.
Yes, Mayor, 4H and L.
Okay, all right, very good. With the exception of C, G, H, and L, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We approve the consent agenda with the exception of C, G, H, and L. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then let's take the Resolution 2012-81, which is 4C. Member Bennett, this is the proposed lot division, the lot line adjustment matter on Brookview Avenue.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Earlier today, I had asked Director Teague for some clarification on the statutory provision involved, and he has placed a revised resolution in front of us this evening and would like him to speak to that. And then also, there was a side yard setback question that was raised at the Planning Commission, and I'd like Director Teague to clarify that as well.
Thank you. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The resolution refers to some exceptions within the subdivision and zoning ordinance in regard to the process for lot divisions. It excludes the requirement for a notice of a public hearing, holding a public hearing, and that a sign does not need to be erected in the front yard of someone who's just shifting a lot line, which is what's proposed here. So, we revised the resolution. It wasn't clear. There wasn't a specific section of the code that was referred to within the previous resolution. The resolution before you cites that specific provision in the code that allows for those exceptions. And in regard to the setback requirements, for an attached garage, the setback requirement is five feet, and for the living space of the homes there, the setback would be 10 feet for the side lot line requirements.
And Director Teague, it's correct that both the existing lots and the resulting lots will be greater than 75 feet, which is the width at which that setback goes to 10 feet?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. I would be happy to move the resolution.
I'll second it.
All right. One other discussion, we'll move into discussion, but Director Teague, the last sentence of the last paragraph says, "No further subdivision be made of said parcels unless made in compliance with the pertinent ordinances of the city of Edina." But this isn't a subdivision, is it? It's just a lot line adjustment. So, is there some language modification that needs to take place there? That it be no further lot line adjustment be made?
Yeah, we don't believe that ... We believe that language is fine, that you wouldn't need to make any changes there.
City Attorney?
This is not a subdivision, as you pointed out, Mayor. This is a lot line adjustment.
Right.
You could just take out ...
Take out the word subdivision?
No further subdivision, just take out, "No further lot line adjustment."
All right. All right, is the maker of the motion comfortable with that change?
Yes.
All right, and the second?
Yep.
Thank you. So, the end of that sentence would read, "And further subject over to the provision that no further lot line adjustment be made of said parcels unless made in compliance with the pertinent ordinances of the city of Edina." And Member Bennett made those other changes. Is that correct? All right.
Actually, Your Honor, I raised the questions, and the changes were made by Director Teague.
Okay, thank you.
Earlier today.
All right, any other discussion? Do you want to move it? Oh, it's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Member Bennett, 4G, that is the parking lot and pathway improvements contract.
Thank you. I also had some questions about this item. I believe that during the CIP discussions, we have talked about the repaving that is necessary within the parking lots and pathways of our parks and public spaces, and we have in other meetings discussed the availability and use of watershed grant funds by other municipalities for similar kinds of projects and the trial and use of some pervious techniques for the repaving. We learned at a watershed workshop for elected officials and for our Energy and Environment Commission members that pervious pavement does not work well for roadways or drive a bowl parts of parking lots, but that it is suitable for the parking part of parking lots. And so, I understand that this may not be something that we're able to do this year. I also understand that it may have an additional cost, but I think that it would meet some of our other goals as a city, and so would like us to consider the use of these alternative techniques and possible grant funding in the future.
So, you're not putting a stop to these projects, but you're continuing the conversation that we need to keep looking at opportunities to use pervious surfaces when we can and grants that allow us to do that because it is, you're right, it is an additional cost.
Sustainable infrastructure is what you're talking about.
Right, and that again, we have goals in terms of our, we have environmental goals as a city, we have goals for our parks, and we also have infrastructure that we want to build that may or may not be pervious. For instance, some trails. Also, we've talked about cart paths at the golf course, and so when we have an opportunity to offset the addition of more pavement with pervious pavement in other locations, I think that that allows us to keep as much pervious surface as possible and still make those other improvements that we're looking at. And I guess, Member Swenson, you have stated my point exactly, and I think what this illustrates is just the magnitude or the amount of this kind of work that we're doing every year. So, I would like us to continue the conversation going forward.
Good. Thank you.
I have a different question for Director Keprios. The Roslin Park pathways, does that include the portion ... Is this by FlowRider only, or is this go, the ring around Lake Cornelia?
That's a separate contract. The ...
The FlowRider?
Yes.
And so, this is for the pathways around Lake Cornelia?
Correct.
And along 66?
Correct.
Okay.
No, not 66, just from 66 around.
The three quarters around?
Correct.
Okay, the C around it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like that pathway along 66 needs to be redone.
Yes, I've been on that recently. That's why I was asking.
It's not in very good shape. Why aren't we doing the portion of the pathway along 66 Street?
Well, we call on engineering to help us determine as to when they need to be done. Wayne, can you, you have a view on that?
Plus, Ritz.
I don't have an answer on that, but we can look into it and see the reason why it wasn't, and it might have been a funding issue, but if it needs to be done, we can put in the future CIP.
I think that maybe you look in that in conjunction with the 66 corridor anyhow. There might be options depending on, you know, if we do advisory bike lanes or some type of bike lane in the future on that road. There's the path that the mayor alluded to along there. There's the two crosswalks, one that will probably have to be done first for the Bike Boulevard and then the one at West Shore as well, and someone also had a, requested a signal at West Shore, and there were some turning issues. So, maybe it's more of a corridor study down the road. These issues have come up before, the crossing pedestrian issues have come up before as well with somebody that lives near the crossing at Cornelia, so.
I do think, I think you raise a good point, though. I think you should take a look at the condition of that pathway along 66 because it looks fairly bad to me.
Look at that.
It looks fairly worn, so take a look at it.
Can I restate something here? I just pulled up the drawing as we were speaking, and it does include the sidewalk through the causeway along 66 Street.
Okay, so it's basically the entire ring that we're doing?
It does, yep, yep.
Beautiful.
Good. That's nice to hear. All right, and then I think if you look north to the city of Shoreview, northeast, they've done quite a bit of pervious work, and I think you could check with their parks folks and the city manager up there. I know from visiting with their mayor over the past few years, they'd done a lot of experimentation work with pervious surfaces, so I think to Member Bennett's point, it would be a good place to check for the future. Member Bennett, would you want to move this matter?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Sure. Let's get a second and then go ahead and answer.
I'll second that. When does the construction project take place?
Well, it'll be completed by October 5.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right. Any other questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, Member Sprague, 4H, the Tracy Avenue Improvement Contract.
Yes, 4H. Yes, I was just reading the staff report and wanted to get a little bit more explanation on the sanitary sewer force main price change.
Yes, Councilmember Sprague, council, what we saw actually on the bids for this project, we had three bidders that submitted bids, and the low bid was $1.376 million, high bid is $1.433 million. Eureka Construction was the low bidder. What we had in our feasibility study was about $1.287 million. The increases that we saw was we had added a storm treatment structure to the storm sewer pipe that actually goes into Hawks Lake down right at the intersection of Warden and Tracy Avenue, and we saw the cost of that was almost double what our consultant had estimated. So, what they had estimated was around $35,000 to $40,000, and the cost being, since this is, our projects are unit price bids, so they added the cost of that treatment structure up to about $110,000. So, what we're recommending is that you would approve the project as bid, but in a change order that we're allowed to do is that we would change order that out of the project, and that we would rebid that at a future date and actually move the treatment structure further down into the cul-de-sac west of Tracy Avenue, just so that we can treat the water in the future that goes into Hawks Lake from this project. But we're still anticipating that we'd have around a $30,000 to $40,000 bid price for that treatment structure. The force main itself was actually, that wasn't an increase in cost, we actually added the force main. There's a force main that runs from the cul-de-sac in Warden Avenue to the east to Tracy, then up the hill to Tracy to Grove Street and then over. That was actually, what we looked at, looked at the age of that and the soil conditions and recommended since we're reconstructing Tracy now is a time to upgrade that line also. So, that was added in. And then the enhanced crosswalks is that we were looking at, and I actually ran it by the Transportation Commission to do a more colorful enhanced crosswalk right at, adjacent to the school.
Yep.
That would have more of a lime green and the white stamped pattern in it and a wider walk, and that would raise the price around $6,700, so.
And does this total still include some type of bio treatment on the surface?
It does. We, there was two residents that we worked with during the design process where we have two bump outs, and they've agreed to place some bio swells in that area to get some more infiltration in that area, and they've agreed to take care of those areas in the future.
Great.
So, the only thing, if I understand what you just said, is that you're going to eliminate the stormwater treatment structure until a later date?
That's right. That's correct, yes.
So, that's the only thing you're taking out of it, but you will still anticipate at some point putting one in?
Right, not part of this project, but part of a future project.
Okay.
It's not required by the watershed, but what we like to do from a staff level is put the treatment structures in where we can so that we don't have to be in ponds and cleaning up ponds for ...
Yeah, no, we've been putting them in for the last few years, so I was actually kind of interested in the potential for keeping it in this project, but that's a cost that we don't assess to, directly to the people on that street. That's a sewer and water cost that we bear as a city, correct?
That's right, yes, yep.
Can I make sure I understand this? So, what we have in front of us is a bid that includes the stormwater structure that's going to be taken out of this project?
Mm-hmm.
And then this project is going to be rebid with that removed? What did you say about rebidding?
What, Councilmember Brindle, what I'm recommending is that we approve the bid as submitted, and then we, by change order, is that we deduct or remove, delete the treatment structure by change order in the future. When we're looking at all the different components, since it's a unit price bid, there's many different components that make up that treatment structure. It would have been really confusing to write that up front here, so the easiest way to do it or the simplest way is to just do it by change order after we award the contract.
Okay, so you wouldn't be, I mean, it wouldn't be efficient to do a change order tonight, for example?
No, I wouldn't recommend it, and actually, we can do that at a staff level, is do a change order on a deletion.
Okay, okay, very good.
Member Bennett?
Thank you, Director Hul. You just explained part of what I was going to ask about, and that is with unit prices on bids, if work is deleted, how do you determine which of the bids is the winning bid?
We did look at that because we didn't want to run into that situation if we were to delete an item and then it would change order of the bidders, and when we looked at it, the same placement of the bidders remains the same.
I would move this item?
Second.
Further discussion? Roger, no legal implication here in approving it as is and then pulling part of what we approved out of there later by change order by staff? It seems to me one of the things you'd worry about is you approved a project that includes something, and now it's being taken out by staff.
I'll look at your change order. I would think the change order probably would come back to the city council.
It does, because it's a certain percentage of the project, and this would probably hit that.
A hundred thousand should come back.
Seems like it would be coming back, okay. And that'll be satisfactory from a legal process standpoint?
Based upon entirety of what Wayne had to say, I think it is, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then there was one more, L, Traffic Safety Report, Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you. And Member Sprague asked that this be removed as well. My question was about the items of recommendation, whether they would require a motion beyond the acceptance of the traffic safety report, and then I was also questioning, I noted that there were two copies of the traffic safety report, committee report attached to this item, and was assuming that we were acting on the first, but wanted clarification on that.
Yes, Councilmember Bennett, council, yes, what we would recommend is that you would accept the revised traffic safety report of May 17. What we did was, we took the suggestions from the Edina Transportation Commission and revised the report to submit to the city council. So, the three items that were on the first page of Item A2, Item B1, and Item D8 have been revised when the, have been noted, and some of them have been revised in the traffic safety report.
Thank you.
Member Sprague?
Thank you. One question is on D11, just clarification as to what that subject matter was about, the striping issue.
I believe, and I'm not the staff person that received that call, but I believe that what that was is the, as you're on the frontage road going south, is to mark the center line as people are lining up to either go eastbound or westbound off that frontage road, which we refer to as Normandale Road. So, if you're on West 70th Street and the first frontage road to the south is that we didn't have the center line marked as you're coming to that intersection.
Okay.
And I believe that was done today, actually.
Okay. And then C1, which is talking about the enhanced pedestrian crossing at 51st and Halifax, and it says, "Staff is recommending the request be delayed. Information from France Avenue pedestrian crossing upgrades may be used if appropriate." So, is the intent to kind of look at that model, see how it performs, and then replicate perhaps in this location if necessary?
That's correct, yes, yep.
Okay. And then on two, again, I just note that this is another 66 Street issue, and at some point, it might behoove the ETC to take a look at this corridor, perhaps in conjunction with the Bike Boulevard. So, just take that under advisement.
Right, right.
Okay. And other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Would you care to move the matter?
I shall, so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second, we adopt 4L, which is the Traffic Safety Committee Report of May 2, 2012. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And that completes the consent agenda. We'll move over to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We were fortunate enough last year to have the robotics team here, the Edina Green Machine Robotics Team came last year and gave us a great update on the things they were working on. I was over at the high school and saw them with something they had created for a competition, and I never did hear how you came out on the competition. But we've got, I think, Rachel Earl, Rebecca Earl, Alex O'Neil, and Michael Woolsey are going to make a presentation this evening, so if you folks want to come forward, we're eager to hear what you have to say about how your year went and see your presentation. Thank you. And then please identify yourselves too, so that we know who you are.
And the rest of the team.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Edina City Council, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today in front of you. My name is Alex O'Neil. I live on Interlochen. I live on Rolling Green Parkway off of Interlochen Boulevard in Edina, Minnesota. I'm a student at Providence Academy in Plymouth.
My name is Rachel Earl. I live at 5161 Abercrombie Drive in Edina, and I go to Edina High School.
My name's Rebecca. I live at 5161 Abercrombie Drive, and I go to Edina High School.
This year, it was decided that the Green Machine entered its seventh season, that we should both formalize our business plan and communicate the impact of Edina Robotics that the Edina Robotics Team has had on all with which we have contact. With that in mind, Dr. Bruce Knite mentored a core team of students to produce a formal documentation of the team's business practices. That plan was met with incredible enthusiasm as the team won the Entrepreneurship Award at both the Lake Superior and North Star Regionals. The Lake Superior Award points, combined with that assigned for the website award, landed us in the inaugural Minnesota State High School League State Championship, where our robot Zephyr was eliminated in the semifinals.
In addition to winning the Entrepreneurship Award at North Star, the team won a second website award, making this the fifth year of award-winning web presence. But the judges weren't done with us yet. Our "That's Impact" campaign caught their fancy, and though our robot was eliminated in the finals, our team was awarded for its impact with the Chairman's Award, the most prestigious award First gives. This award, our second, carried the team to St. Louis to compete in the first world championships, where we all had fantastic experiences, and our robot showed well on the world stage.
With your permission, we would like to present to you our Chairman's Award-winning presentation and video.
Very good. Please do.
The Green Machine formed and currently maintains the foundation of First Robotics in Minnesota. Its strong and vibrant support system enables First Robotics to thrive in this great state. We have grown our impact from our home to the world. Our goal in this presentation is to give you the facts to support this claim.
Did you know that Minnesota has the third highest number of First teams in the U.S., only behind California and Michigan? First participation in Minnesota has grown faster than any other state in our country. We are here to tell you that the Green Machine, its team members, mentors, and sponsors helped make that happen.
How, might you ask? Well, when the Green Machine was first founded in 2005, we were the very first FRC team in the state of Minnesota. We knew that we would have more fun and expand the mission of First if we concentrated on team expansion. We are big believers in the idea of see one, do one, teach one. With this philosophy in mind, we set out to impact the culture in Minnesota.
The Green Machine believes that sustainability is a key factor for the future of First in Minnesota. Each year, we systematically attract new members and new sponsors to our team. We receive strong support from parents, mentors, and sponsors. We students lead every aspect of our team, from meetings to brainstorming, to build, to strategy, to scouting, to outreach. We do everything except for drive the bus.
The mission of the Green Machine is fully aligned with First. We seek to expand the reach and impact of STEM education. We do that by being totally committed to First throughout the entire year. First involves a year-round commitment for the Green Machine.
In the community, the Green Machine mentors FLL and FTC teams. We describe the benefits of STEM education and participation in First leagues to the elementary schools in our district. We mentor Girl Scouts to increase the number of girls interested in First.
That's impact.
First participation in Minnesota has grown dramatically over the years, from one team in 2005 to 154 teams just seven years later. This growth is directly attributable to the Green Machine and the combined efforts of the Minnesota Regional Planning Committee to staff and organize a larger number of First Robotics events. Our website garners a large international impact and has won many awards.
That's what I call international impact.
The Green Machine helped form and mentor teams such as Prior Lake, St. Paul's, Robet's, Egan, and Woodbury. These teams have gone on to be very successful and have in turn mentored other teams, thereby carrying forward the see one, do one, teach one philosophy, driving First expansion.
Each year, the Green Machine seeks to grow First here at home. This past year, an FLL team was formed at Creek Valley Elementary School by members of both the Green Machine and the Bucket Brigade, our team's first of five FTC teams. A second FLL team is now forming at Providence Academy, bringing the total number of FLL and FTC teams mentored and/or founded by the Green Machine to a total of 11. Girl Scout camps and Star Wars at the library promise even more FLL teams to form this coming summer. That's impact.
STEM education is flourishing in our school district due to Project Lead the Way initiatives. Ninety percent of our current and former team members are pursuing STEM careers, ninety percent. As I mentioned earlier, our website will get close to 1 million views in 2012.
That's impact.
Our mentors hold leadership positions in the Minnesota Regional Planning Committee. They continue to build and maintain the infrastructure that is necessary to support the expansion of First.
That's impact.
This unprecedented growth is a direct result of the modeling of the Green Machine's philosophy of see one, do one, teach one. This has become the hallmark of what it means to be First in Minnesota.
In the end, it's not about the awards we win or how the basketball goes in.
It's about the impact that we make on other teams, mentors, and states.
We've made First We've made first in Minnesota grow a pretty big deal, don't you know?
That is the mission of our team, the impact of the Green Machine.
That's impact. Go first.
All right. Very good. (applause)
And now we have our Chairman's Video that we are going to show you.
Very good. I think that's, uh, fantastic you'll be able to see your, uh, your creation.
Since 2006, Team Eighteen Sixteen has worked hard to inspire communities throughout the state to develop and support first robotics programs. We started seven new teams in 2007. Of the fifteen we have directly measured, like King Tech, the Robettes, and Blue Twilight, they in turn have helped at least that many teams begin. As those teams become veterans, they help form other new teams. Now, from only one active team, there are one hundred and fifty-four teams in Minnesota. Plus, our website gets more than seventy-five thousand unique hits monthly. Our team's impact extends well beyond Minnesota, throughout the country and the world. We reach thousands of first members by hosting the annual Minnesota Splash. We've grown from the evening before kickoff to a full day at the University of Minnesota to reaching even the farmost corners with webcasting from the Microsoft Tech Center. We hosted and presented three nights of webinars covering robot inspections, fundraising, scouting, and robot programming. By web streaming, we reached more first members than ever before, our topmost goal with our outreach programs. Eighteen Sixteen is the go-to team in Minnesota. When the Girl Scouts need camp mentors and STEM presenters, they turn to us. When the county library needs a star attraction, they call the Green Machine. At the Minnesota State Fair, our green sure to attract a crowd. When United States Senator Al Franken needs a high school student to testify to the value of STEM education, he turns to the Green Machine. We make regular TV appearances, whether online with Edina Patch, to a morning show from STEM Day in Minneapolis, to a full-hour program on the value of mentoring. Eighteen Sixteen was showcased on Kara Levin's hour-long special on mentoring programs. We have built incredible relationships with our sponsors, new and old. Sebastian Blumberg, a local engineering company, was so impressed with the impact of what kids can do, they changed their company's donation program to fund STEM in our community. At competitions, we leave events with far less gear and tools than we begin with. We give away our materials, our time, and our expertise. Our goal is that every first team have as amazing an experience as we do at competitions. In our hometown of Edina, we bring first into our community and our schools. We mentor four Edina FTC teams, including an all-girls FTC team, as well as first Lego League teams. We helped establish Project Lead the Way in our middle schools and high school. Eighteen Sixteen members take full advantage of these pre-engineering classes. Our Edina City Council called us to a meeting to congratulate and thank us for making science and technology an integral part of our community. In seven short years, we've helped start and expand first in Minnesota. We are proud to see where the teams we started have gone and excited to help them achieve their goals. The Green Machine is delighted that first in STEM is now part of our lives, and we are excited about our future.
Thank you.
Yep. (applause) I think you ought to explain just a bit about, uh, the machine that you did create this year for the competition. You've got that basketball in your hand there. I think you could use that as a prop.
Um, so, this year's competition was essentially a, um, a basketball game on steroids. We had, uh, six robots on the field, um, and there were two teams. Uh, one team, uh, each had, each team had three robots, and the goal was to shoot as many baskets as possible, get as many points, and, uh, win the game.
Um, there were four baskets, one high, two middle, and one low. And the game lasts two minutes, and it begins with an autonomous mode where the robot operates in pre-programmed instructions. And at our regional in Minneapolis, at the Mariucci Arena, we were very successful and we only missed one autonomous shot. So, in that regional, we ended up in second place. And that was the region we also won our Chairman's Award.
Well, if you tell folks how long you had to create a machine that would shoot a basketball, actually pick it up and shoot it, and, and move around.
We got six weeks from the day that they announced the game. We got six weeks to build our robot.
All right. Very good. Well, thanks. Uh, I think, Jennifer, do you want to?
(inaudible). I swear, the last time you were here, you handed out green bandanas. And I just want you to know that that's my child's, my five-year-old's favorite bandana. It's a Green Machine. He's on Facebook with it like this, like a ninja. He loves that bandana.[910.00][910.00](laughter)
Okay, really got to smuggle up though, okay. There we go.
Very good.
Um, before we go, uh, we'd like to present this ball, um, from the 2012 Rebound Rumble Game to the mayor, um, on behalf of the Green Machine. We all signed it, and, uh, it's pretty fun to play with.
All right. Thanks. We'll put it, uh, on display in a prominent location in the, in the city hall. Thank you very much. Chief Scher, you want to come up, please? We've got, uh, a, uh, CenterPoint Energy Community Partnership Grant, uh, that's been given to the fire department. I want to have you come up and talk about it a little bit, and, uh, see if someone with you from CenterPoint Energy was welcome.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Todd Norgan with CenterPoint Energy. I'm happy to be here tonight to present our Community Partnership Grant to the city of Edina. It really is our opportunity to share our commitment to safety as we work with, uh, community, uh, leaders from, uh, the fire department and police departments around our community and, and in our trading area. I'm an area manager for CenterPoint Energy, so I get to, I get to do that throughout my territory. Our grant program does enable us to lo, leverage our local funds to purchase needed safety equipment for, uh, 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 safety projects, uh, throughout our, uh, local communities. And I'm glad to be here tonight to present community, our Community Partnership Grant to the city of Edina for twenty-five hundred dollars that will be used to purchase multi-gas atmosphere monitors for the fire department.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Chief? Thank you very much.[1071.00][1071.00](applause) Thank you. And, uh, thanks to CenterPoint. Very generous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I just want to thank CenterPoint Energy and all of our community partners along with the city council. Uh, all the equipment is greatly appreciated. That helps our firefighters do their job, and this is, uh, replacing some, um, older equipment that needs to be replaced, and it's, uh, funding we didn't have to do it. So, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you very much for that generous grant.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to, uh, come forward and address a concern with the council? Yes, sir. Come on up. And I don't know if you were here when the meeting started, but you'll have three minutes. Were you here for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And you'll get a little yellow light, uh, that'll give you an indication you've got thirty seconds left.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Shannon Ingam. I live at forty-three sixty France Avenue, uh, number six, and it is in Edina. Uh, I am a practicing artist, uh, full-time. My discipline is drawing and painting. And I'm a graduate of the Corcoran College of Art and Design in, uh, in the Museum Culture of Washington, DC. Uh, my statement concerns the Minnesota Museum of American Art, uh, the MMAA. And, uh, the, uh, permanent collection of the Minnesota Museum of American Art, MMAA, is now in storage and has been for years. I believe this to be the worst cultural loss in the history of the state of Minnesota and should be resolved to benefit the entire state. Um, I believe that, uh, the city of Edina has the opportunity with the, uh, Grand View Development to, uh, resolve this problem for good and put the collection into a museum. Uh, the staff and board of the MMAA are planning on eventually returning the permanent collection after continued storage to an office-wide gallery in downtown St. Paul. This is the same venue that the collection has already failed. The MMAA would, uh, should seek a museum venue for the Minnesota Museum of American Art, one with a high potential for success. My suggestion is that the city of Edina acquire the permanent collection of the MMAA for display as the focal point of the Grand View Development, uh, to create a museum experience for the permanent display of a world-class collection of art. I have a personal experience with the importance of comparable art collections, uh, one being the Corcoran, uh, the Corcoran Museum in the, uh, George Washington Community of DC. The others is, uh, the Phillips Collection in the Dupont Circle Community. Uh, the MMAA has a great potential as a cultural attraction for the entire Lakes and Plains region. And that's my comment.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Interesting idea. Let us talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much for coming. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter in front of us in that section of the agenda is a resolution, uh, 2012-80, accepting various donations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And, uh, donations this reporting period are to the Edina Arts Center and the, uh, fire department, uh, reporting out on the CenterPoint Energy, uh, grant for the gas detectors. Also, a nice gift from Andy and Michelle Herring. Andy used to be on the park board, as I recall, and, uh, for five hundred dollars. So, uh, thanks to those folks, and those names will be on the website shortly. Uh, next, we are going to have a discussion about the Edina Arts Center, uh, and the study that was, is proposed to take place over there.
Thank you, Mayor Huffman.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Huffman, members of the council. Uh, I'll make this brief. The, uh, this has been before you, before, the, uh, there were, uh, two different proposals that were submitted, uh, in the first round of requests for proposals, and back on March 6th, the city council, uh, rejected both proposals as to the, the staff's recommendation and brought it back to our working group of the, the Arts Center Board, which consisted of Chairman Bill McCabe, uh, Thomas Roy Clay, and Dana Lappin, and, uh, three staff members, myself, Ann Catry, and our interim director, Michael Frye. Uh, we regrouped and met with the, uh, the consultants of the, the two submittals, Nancy Lee and George Sutton, and asked them to help us refine our, our F.P. and see if they would reconsider and submit, uh, a new proposal to, to bring it more within, uh, affordable means. Uh, they did that. We, uh, we did meet with both consultants. Uh, Nancy Lee decided at the end of the process that, uh, it didn't fit her strengths, so she chose to pull out of the process. Yeah, but we did get a, uh, a submittal back from George Sutton, and the, uh, working group reconvened, uh, reviewed the submittal, and, uh, have made the recommendation to the Arts Center Board and onto the city council that, uh, we accept that proposal as submitted from Sutton and Associates. The, uh, the focus really was narrowed to, uh, try to achieve a stronger cost recovery percentage for the Arts Center, uh, still to consider, uh, an organizational structure that would include a 501(c)(3) option and how that might work, and if that may, uh, benefit the residents of Edina, to look at some of our marketing and advertising and our operations and fees and charges and some benchmark analysis. Uh, with that, uh, with that focus, uh, the working group and Arts Center Board would recommend the council would consider accepting the proposal as submitted by George Sutton. And I stand to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Caprios. Member Swenson.
The only thing that maybe I didn't see clearly is, we never determined if the current location was the great location for an arts center. And I don't know if part of your scope discussed the fact that, um, should we have an arts center as a community or not, um, but that, that seemed like a pretty broad question to, to be in here. But I know, you know, that was kind of in the first go-round. Do you feel that those two, or at least the second part, should we have one, is too broad a question?
I, I think it was determined as part of the narrow that we could, that was another whole subject of discussion that might be better left to.
And I get that, but I just wanted to confirm that. How about the location part of it, though? You know, because when we look at it, there are questions about, you know, does it do what it should there, but we never said, is that the best place for an arts center?
Preserve the function, but move it to.
Right.
Mm-hmm. That, that wasn't part of the, uh, the new focus, but I think it's a question that I, I think can be addressed through the study, and that was discussed, I believe, at our, our last sit-down with both consultants. They'd be willing to give at least their opinion on, on, uh, what is the current location problematic? Is it detrimental to our cost recovery?
Well, I mean, you know, we discuss it for a number of reasons. One, the building isn't ADA compliant. Two, it's in an odd place. It's hard to find. So, I was just wondering if as we do all this work about, you know, gee, can we make it more cost-effective? Is the location of it a detriment? And, you know, if it comes up that it really doesn't serve based on its, um, uh, space well, you know, we haven't really said, well, gee, do you do something different where it is, or do you move it? And, uh, you have a cost for the land, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because that's going to be, based on your outcome, that might be a question that kind of follows.
It might be something worthy of a follow-up study. We did, uh, follow through, uh, manager Neil directed us to, to do an assessment of the property, which is in the back of your packet.
Mm-hmm. No, and I appreciate that.
Member Bennett.
I have a, um, question that fits with the questions my colleagues have asked, and that is with the first bullet point that asks, what are the arts centers weaknesses and strengths in marketing and advertising? It almost, one could almost put parentheses. I know that we want to know how successful the marketing and advertising are, but I think we also want to know what are weaknesses and strengths. And I believe, Member Swenson, that your questions would fit under that umbrella question if, if that can be asked. I understand that they have responded to an RFP, but it does seem to me that that is a valid and important question.
Are you talking about operations?
I'm looking again at that first bullet point under pro, programs and services.
But.
Um, okay, looking down.
Yeah, it's back on page four, too, is what you.
That's what I'm saying, is on four, they kind of expand the scope of that question. Page four, it says identify current operational strengths and weaknesses.
Yes, I see that. In fact, so that question should cover what Member Swenson has asked, and it should cover also what you have asked, I think.
Good. I, I think, uh, inherent or implicit in this, uh, analysis, and I, frankly, I thought the proposed scope of services was quite, quite comprehensive, and I think that we'll be able to figure out from the information that's gathered through Sutton and Associates whether it makes sense to keep having, uh, the arts center activities take place at that location.
Okay. We'll, uh, we'll be sure to carry that consultant in our first meeting and, and make that a, uh, a focus.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Other questions for Director Caprios in this matter, or I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we, uh, take the action requested by the Arts Center Board and Staff, that the council approve the analysis and recommendations for operations of the Edina Arts Center proposal as submitted by Sutton and Associates. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And next, we are going to move on, Director Caprios, to the, uh, Bramar Golf Dome. It looks like you've done some, uh, good work there and decided, uh, we should probably leave it where it is.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Huffman and members of the council. Based on the findings from the sports dome feasibility study phase two, uh, we've come to the conclusion that there was, uh, certainly no room to put it, uh, at the site we had originally thought might be appropriate to have a, if you call a double dome, served by a, a common administrative building, uh, south of the South Metro Training Facility. Being that that is not even physically an option, uh, we entered into a discussion of, does it make some sense to, uh, place and replace the golf dome in its current location? I think we've come to the conclusion it makes a lot of financial sense, uh, from a number of standpoints. We can use and, and save ourselves a lot of money by not relocating because the insurance monies would not cover the cost of, uh, new footings, should we have to go to a new site. would not cover the cost of new footings, should we have to go to a new site. We can use the existing footings and use in the same footprint of the golf dome. We would continue that footing to make it continuous, so it's no longer attached to whatever the building become, the administrative building, so it is attached to a concrete footing all the way around. The size of the dome, we would envision to be the exact same. The footprint would be the same, square footage would be the same. The thing yet to be determined would be the administrative building itself. And we would go through the, the architect process and meet with staff and, and get input from our, our golfers and, and come up with a plan that we would like to submit to you. We needed to get first the location, zero it in on first to be sure we had your blessing before we charged down that road of finding professional help to design the replacement. And that's what we would recommend.
Member Sprague.
Did I hear you say that you're hoping to use a new construction technique that would improve the longevity of the new golf dome by not having this administrative building and having it tied directly down, or?
Correct. It's, it's not as much as, the longevity itself, based on the new products available, that'll increase the longevity of.
Right.
Of the membrane. But it's more importantly is the original structural design of the original dome wasn't the best.
Mm-hmm.
When there was stress on the building due to either wind or snow loads, it would literally pull on that wooden building.
Okay.
And the building literally moved, which in, in fact, its last demise, it, it suffered quite a bit of structural damage, and we're of the opinion it needs to basically be replaced. So we want to avoid that problem on the next go-round and put concrete footings all the way around, make that connection, and, and keep it from causing that stress on a new administrative building.
Thank you.
Be better engineered.
Other questions for Director Caprios with regard to the Braemar Golf Dome?
I do. Just, if you would expound on the building a little bit, what, what's going to be in it? As far as, is it going to be, you know, a reception area, bathrooms, an area to sell, like a pro shop, if you will?
Preliminary discussions with Manager Anderson, I think Todd might be here. There he is here. And you can stand up and correct me if I'm wrong, but very similar to what we have. Accessible restroom facilities, obviously a counter to wait on customers, probably similar retail that we currently do, which is just whatever prepackaged foods. I think there's a beer sales and a very small golf retail, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
Okay. So, not much more than just what you currently see.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Is there an opportunity to bring some of our concession learning into this new facility that Assistant Catry has been working on these other facilities? Is there a chance to replicate that model in this building to increase sales as well?
I think that's something we can certainly take a look at. Absolutely.
And just, is there big enough for any casual seating as you're waiting or you've gotten off from hitting your balls?
The current building allows for some of that.
Yeah.
And I envision the same footprint, maybe take advantage of the same footings.
Okay.
That are there.
Okay.
And I think we would allow for some casual seating.
And the only other feedback I've gotten is a mixed one, the balcony. Some people like the fact their balls seem to go longer because the balcony is falling over, and some wonder if you're going to be actually making it level. I assume you'll be making it level.
Yeah. And we would make it more structurally sound so it doesn't move. That's, that's all going to be corrected. We want to be sure we had your blessing and put it back in the same place.
Other questions?
I would move this issue.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we approve the construction of a replacement golf dome in the exact same location as the current golf dome. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. One other question, are the negotiations completed with the insurance carrier? Are we satisfied with the outcome there? Manager Neil?
No. They're not, the negotiations are not completed yet, and so we're not satisfied with the outcome yet, but that doesn't mean we're necessarily at odds. What it means is that we are still continuing to, they're, they're still continuing to do their investigation of the site. We're still continuing now to move ahead with a project that we're going to put under design, which we will then be able to demonstrate to them that we have costs over and above the $668,000 that we've already received in settlement money from Travelers. So, we're pretty confident we can do that. Travelers is, is confident probably also that we can do that as well. We've had that kind of discussion with them. It's really a matter of how much more we're going to be able to get from them to kind of rebuild the structure.
Does the rebuilding of the structure include new turf?
Yes, sir, will.
New mats, all those things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next matter. You have Director Caprios, and that is the sports dome feasibility study phase two, which was the site location study.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. As directed by council, we, we took the, our hired consultants of Cunningham and Anderson Johnson, sent them on a charge to do a feasibility study of essentially one site, to see if it would work for either a sports dome or that combination, sports dome, golf dome. As you can see from their comprehensive study, that physically it, it is possible. There are a lot of encumbrances to the site. Bottom line and cut to the chase, it's about a $1.2 million correction, just for that site alone, not including any cleanup of any lead contamination that we have there. And those estimates could be anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 beyond that. So we're probably looking in the neighborhood of about $1.5 million just to squeeze a 235 by 400-foot sports dome into that location. Physically, it's possible. Staff would recommend that it's probably not financially feasible. If, if the council agrees with that, the staff further would recommend that the next step in the process would be to send the, the whole matter back to our working group of the park board, the Park Board Sports Dome Working Group, to, to reevaluate some other sites, or site, as the council may want to direct us to do. Long and the short, that's where this came to.
Questions for Director Caprios on this recommendation? Yeah, I think we're in lockstep with you after reading that comprehensive report.
I was just sad that we didn't have the opportunity. Can I just be sad for part of one meeting, and then we can move on? Okay.
Well, I, I was thinking if it had just been contamination, perhaps it could have been some brown field grants or something, but it's really more soil correction than, than contamination cleanup. Correct?
There, I, we believe there.
Cost-wise.
There is some lead contamination grant dollars available through the county, so that is a good, that is good. We'd still be left, I think, with well over a million dollars in.
In soil corrections.
Site correction with retaining.
Well, we still can't fit both domes there, which is what I think made it more attractive to this as an area.
And we have no place to move the public works cold storage building if we put the golf dome back where it is.
If we don't, yeah. If we put the golf dome back, which we just did.
Member Bennett.
Given the numbers that we've seen, and I agree, I think it was a comprehensive, thorough report, and topography also seemed to be a problem, that there was basically almost a story of difference or more than in terms of the grade, and that would have required quite a bit of structure to be built under this double dome. But given the costs that have been identified, and those are not supportable. However, will the look for another site include the potential of actually possibly purchasing other land, other than some of the sites that had? I, we, I know we've looked at sites in school property. Most of our school property is located in residential neighborhoods. We know from seeing where these have been located in other cities, that in other cities, they're normally located in more commercial or industrial areas. So this creates the question of where can we identify other locations, and will we possibly be looking at sites for purchase?
If that is the direction the council would like to give us, we, there is a site within Edina that I think maybe has that opportunity. If you'd like us to entertain and look at that site, we would be happy to, to do that. I think we're, I think the sports dome working group would appreciate some guidance from the council on expectation from here, rather than visit every single site that may, could be identified. I, I think that's an excellent point, Member Bennett, that, yes, I think there is that possibility.
I'll be a little more specific. I know that two of the school sites that have been identified where high school sports are played.
Yes.
Are, again, both adjacent to or surrounded by residential neighborhoods. And in addition to that interrelationship of property types, there also is, I think, a transportation issue, and that is that they are in neighborhoods and accessible through neighborhoods. So the traffic that would be generated, and I know that part of the return on a dome comes from having it available for rental after the youth sports teams are using it. So we've heard figures or heard descriptions of domes being available for rental until 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning. I don't think that's going to be acceptable to our residents, nor would I ask them that it be acceptable to them. And so there's the hours of operation issue, and then again, the transportation or just street access, access issue, parking issue. And I know that both of those school locations, even though one is visible from the freeway and you can wave at it from the freeway, you can't get to it directly from the freeway, you have to exit and come back toward it.
All right. So to the question of some further guidance for the task force, what specifically would you like from us? I mean, it seems to me that one of the sites we've, we've all talked about as, as a possibility, based on the criteria that Member Bennett has talked about, is, is that soccer field north of the Braemar Ice Arena is, is one, one potential location. And is the site that Member Bennett is alluding to without identifying it a church property?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay.
I suppose it could be, but that's not the one I had.
I mean, I guess if you.
Three syllables, sounds like.
I actually had an industrial site in mind, not a specific site, just knowing that that's.
If you had an industrial.
I thought you were on to something that, that none of us knew.
No, one of my colleagues is in real estate. I'm not.
All right.
Go, go ahead.
Is that the one on Edina Industrial?
Your honor, I think if you're looking, if you're looking for what kind of input would be helpful, I think if the council is already of a mind that you are not interested in receiving proposals to put this facility on school property or adjacent to school property because of the neighborhood concerns that it might create just even talking about that idea, you should tell that, you should tell the working group that now. I think that's important for, for you to tell them that and take those sites off the table.
That'd be very helpful.
It may not leave a lot of other sites, but if you give us the flexibility to examine that site on the north side of, at Braemar, and also if you give us the flexibility to look at sites that perhaps might be for sale on the private market, that, that's, that would be good input for them to get.
Yes.
I think all of us on the council have experienced the neighbor attention at some of these sites where just a passing comment about the, the potentiality of a location creates a high level of angst. And I don't think, I think they've messaged yours clear, stay away from the, the school sites that are adjacent to.
I served on the Blue Ribbon Commission when we were looking at Coleman Field, and I'm not intending to go back there again.
Okay. Or, or down below the high school is another location.
Right. That would be very similar.
For the folks on Creek, Creek Valley.
But, but Manager Neil, what's, in terms of examining a paid-for site, how could it possibly approach feasibility in comparison to a publicly owned site? I mean, you've got not only, I mean, especially if there's a structure on it, so then you've got acquisition plus demolition.
Well, it's possible there's a, a site without a structure on it.
There is.
There aren't many vacant sites, but there are some. But, but when you look at perhaps a, a site that's, that's well situated for a structure like this, that might have a structure on it right now that could be removed, it's certainly in this, especially in the case of, of the site south of the training center, spending that much money on site prep just to bring it to even, that's the kind of comparison I think we could do for you.
You know, maybe it would, I, I don't envision putting a ton of money into looking for sites, but if one could come up that would at least give us a comparison.
Right.
Of, because we would add a field if we bought a site versus, we're kind of trading a field if we use a site north of Braemar.
Well, I'll stick my neck out because I don't know how long I can continue this conversation and not talk about the site. But there is a site. No?
I don't think if we were going to look at purchasing something, we want to talk about that right now, do we?
Okay.
Manager Neil? I guess I would ask for your advice.
As a purchaser of real estate, you know? We, but we would say that we would certainly talk to you privately, and, and if there's sites that you want us to look at and.
That are also.
And make some inquiries into the private ownership of them, we'd certainly do that.
I guess you hear from us, we're not entirely closed to purchasing a site. Would that be accurate? And that we don't want you to look at school sites.
Right.
That's very helpful. You have a motion.
Do you need that in a motion?
Yeah, he does.
Sure.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Moved and seconded that the council authorized the Park Board Sports Dome Working Group to reconvene for the purpose of recommending alternative sites for the Park Board and city council's consideration as to a sports dome location. These pieces of guidance provided tonight included in that motion.
Perfect.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, next, we are on to sketch plan review, and Director Teague, you have this matter. And for the folks coming from the, the proponent, I think you had about 15 minutes at the planning commission to make your main presentation, and I think we'll plan on something like that here, and then we, you know, it, it may change because people may ask questions as you're presenting, but kind of use that as a rough guide for the structure of the conversation and the presentation. So this is after Director Teague gets done with his, his work.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a sketch plan, plan review to develop 232 units of upscale apartments at the Southdale site. So any, again, it's just a sketch plan review, so any opinions, comments provided by the council tonight in regard to the sketch plan are considered advisory only and don't constitute any binding decision this evening. The apartments proposed would be located at the southeast corner of the Southdale site. This is a look at the property today. It's currently used by a large parking field. You can see the shadow of the Westin to the south here. It's used as a park and ride for the metro transit. Here's 69th Avenue right here and York Avenue to the east. A look across the parking lot at the new CVS, so again, this would be the, the site here. This site is currently zoned, PCD III, Planned Commercial District III. It's our most intense commercial zoning district in the city. We allow a height of 12 stories on this site, and multiple-family residential is a use that is allowed in this zoning district by conditional use permit. The, the applicant has been considering possibly a rezoning of the site to PUD. We'd like some feedback possibly from the council as in regard to what's the proper zoning of the site. I, I believe they're leaning, they had indicated at the planning commission meeting that they're leaning toward using the conventional zoning, the PCD III. With that, they would need a conditional use permit and a couple of variances that would be required. One of the, one of the, the buildings, we'll take a look at in a minute, and the amount of parking on the Southdale site, they would be short parked. So those two variances would be required. The alternative would be a planned unit development rezoning, and as the council recalls, this area is located in a potential area of change within our comprehensive plan. So if any rezoning is, is proposed, the council needs to make a determination if a small area plan is required. So if they do decide to go PUD, council would need to make a finding that a smaller area plan is either needed or it's not needed. So this is a look at, the site plan is proposed. They are proposing a 10-story building, be located right here along York Avenue. This is the building that would require a variance setbacks, the required setback is based on the height of the building, so that would require a variance. The second building would be along 69th Street here, that would meet all required setbacks, that would be a six-story building, and then a three-story building in this location that would face Southdale. A couple of changes the applicant has indicated that they would make. Note on, on the plan here, there's a sidewalk around the site here that's adjacent to the traveled portion of the roads. They're suggesting or are willing to revise that to provide some green space, to provide a separation there from the traffic, a little safer environment. Also, there. Also, they're indicating doing a podium-style height along the building that faces York in this area here, again, to provide a little more comfortable pedestrian way so that that large building isn't looming as pedestrians walk by. So as you see, it's a full complement of landscaping around the perimeter of the site. Proposed access to the site would be off of 69th, the right-in, right-out only, and also off of the frontage road in this location here. All of the parking for the facilities would be underground. There would be some visitor parking in this field here and some to the north as well. Couple of issues that would need to be looked at as part of any formal submittal for a rezoning or the conditional use permit here would be a parking and traffic study. Again, we need to examine the parking for Southdale and the impacts on the roadways. There's also some sewer capacity issues, so that would need to be looked at as well. Just to quickly show you some examples of the mass of the building, they haven't developed any architecture to these buildings, so what we're seeing here is just to give you an idea of the mass and scale. So again, this is the 10-story and the six-story building. A look at the site again. The applicant will also go through some of these details. This was reviewed by the planning commission as part of a sketch plan review there. I think the most significant issue that they talked about and discussed is making pedestrian connections, in particular to Southdale, to and from Southdale, so residents going back and forth to so providing that safe connection. Also, providing connections to the south, to the Galleria site. Also, there was some discussion in regard to the front entrance. This would be a shared kind of pedestrian with traffic in this location here, so there was a lot of ideas that were shared there. So that being a key component to this with the visibility there at York and 69th. Some of the other items that they touched on or raised at the planning commission would be amenities for the users of the facility. Planning commission wanted to see a height comparison of the proposed buildings here in relation to Southdale and the Weston and some of the buildings in the area. Also wanted to see more detail as far as where the bike racks would be, bus access routes in the area. They also expressed a desire to see the big-picture plan for Southdale. Is there anything else planned? So they had some discussions in that regard. So with that, the development team is here to make their presentations. Beforehand, I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Questions for Director Teague?
Will you go back to your schematics with the little red lines around Southdale? It was one of the first things you showed. And its owner, it's how Southdale, yep, is divided. So that triangle that's on the east side is currently really that lot line, correct?
Correct, yeah, there's a series of small lots.
So this, what they're proposing really crosses over that, so is the intent that that lot line is going to move?
It does, that is the intent. So there's a couple of options here. They could do a lot line adjustment, simply shifting those lot lines, or they could replat the property and create a new lot. If they do that, they would be required a park dedication fee, and that would be $5,000 per unit. So they'll have to do one of those two things at minimum.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Other questions for Director Teague? Otherwise, we will invite the Representative Stewart.
I have one question.
Sure. Member Bennett.
Director Teague, you showed a diagram that does not show any kind of sidewalk or pedestrian pathway along France Avenue, I am sorry, along York Avenue, that one right there. But I noted that when the applicant presented to the planning commission, and they'll probably show us this tonight, they now have a schematic or rendering that, I've never served on planning, so I may not have my terminology exactly right, but what they showed to the planning commission does now have a pathway or sidewalk along York Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
They had the color graphic of essentially this scheme here. We just had the black and white one that shows the trail along York in this location here with the green space.
And then traveling south on York, you have a free right turn currently now. That makes that corner kind of tough to cross easily.
That is correct.
You showed it, there's in a couple of them.
Yeah, this one here, you can see the right travel lane.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Members, Brian Dudley, I'm the Vice President of Development at Stewart Companies. And on behalf of our Chairman, Stuart Nolan, and our partners in this project, Simon Property Group, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening to hear about a project that we're all excited about. Give you a little background about who Stewart Companies is. We're owners, developers, and operators of multifamily rental housing in the Midwest. We currently own and operate near 5,000 apartment units in the Midwest. Mr. Nolan and Stewart Companies have been in business in the apartment industry for over 42 years, and over that time, he's been involved in the development of around 10,000 units of rental housing. We are co-owners and operators of York Plaza, which is just located down from the Southdale site. We're familiar with the Edina Market and what the public is looking for and what the demand is in this area, so we're looking to build an upscale, as mentioned earlier, project, and David will get into, from BKV Architects, will get a little more detail about the project.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is David Matzenbecker. I'm the landscape architect with BKV Group. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Mike Krish, architect with BKV Group. We're going to walk you through some of the changes from the plans that Director Teague shared with you, and then entertain any questions that you have. As you noted, we did have a sidewalk before, we just moved it in to give a little bit more buffer space and green space along this edge. And I'll take this opportunity to explain that one of the main ideas behind this was to be almost a building in a park on this corner, to bring a little bit more green space to a very hard, impervious corner that exists currently, and to really give an iconic corner for this space, really highlighting York and 69th. So what we've done, you'll see up in the top corner here, and then wrapping around each edge, there right now is a nice berm that exists on that site with some trees on it that screens that very nicely. We took our cues from that and wanted to architecturally elevate that a little bit higher. So we've done some really formed berms that hide some key pieces on site. So this guest parking lot on the north side here is screened by some berms with some great plantings on them that then open up to reveal the main building as you drive south on York. Again, that repeats itself here on the corner of York and 69th, where there is a berm that wraps a little bit of this entry, and then some more guest parking here along 69th that continues in this realm. And then on the backside against the mall parking lot, a little less berms because we have a little less space to work with, but some really dense, rich plantings back there to give the folks in these three-story townhomes a little bit of buffer from the mall road and traffic. I will highlight a little bit here on the corner of 69th and York, the turnaround, the kind of drop-off plaza for folks coming to visit owners in this spot. They might pull in, park in some of these guest spots, or they may drive in and just turn around as you might in a hotel and drop off and then go park. One of the things that we looked at and that Commissioner Fisher mentioned when we were at Planning Commission was this is kind of like a one-erf concept where it's a shared street. And I have some pictures, examples that I can show you if you're interested later on, but the idea is that cars and pedestrians mix here with the focus being on pedestrians, and so putting bollards, doing changes in pavement color, things like that to highlight where pedestrians move, where cars are supposed to move, but being able to contain both in the same place. And then pulling with this little slice through the berm, the pedestrian connection out to the existing crosswalks going south and east. One of the last things I'll mention is that we wanted to pull the sidewalk along the south edge and look at connecting down towards the Galleria and then possibly even up, this was the discussion at the planning commission, connection possibly up this green space here all the way to the mall itself, so that we have a little bit better connection. And that was something that was highlighted in the Southdale plan that we really wanted to strive for. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit about the architecture, and then we'll be happy to entertain questions.
Thanks, Mr. Matzenbecker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mike Krish with BKV Group. And I'll just talk in broader terms, specifically because that's the stage that we're at in terms of design right now. We've looked at the broader picture of how we get into the site, the massing locations of the site, where the main entrance is, how the buildings combine and develop to create private courtyards as well as integrate with the exterior surrounding. Our approach to design is a holistic, integrated approach with landscaping, traffic, building design, architecture, outdoor space, indoor quality, environment. That being said, pulling way back, the site's located in an area where the context is larger scale. You've got the Weston to the south, the large expanses of the parking lots, Southdale itself, which is a larger building across the street, across York, it begins to develop into smaller-scale components. And so this location allows us an opportunity to relate to all of that and create its own iconic identity and branded environment. The idea of the massing of the buildings as a collection of buildings, it's really three buildings, two of which relate directly to the intersection and the orthogonal grid of York and 69th, while on the northwestern-facing portion, it creates a broad gesture towards Southdale, and the three of those buildings combined create a, you know, a larger-scale massing and integration. And along with the integration of the berms, we feel like this sets itself apart as being very identifiable. I think just, David can go through the sketches here, but where we're at in design here, the building, I just want to emphasize it, it's not designed, this is really more of a massing. Yes, there will be glass, we're looking at the idea of balconies, and we have really just started the process of what the building design looks like and so forth. And really where we're at is we've got to hear a series of precedent studies, and this is projects that have been done around the country. They're not necessarily BKV projects at all, but we're looking at how our project design is and important components. The picture at the upper left is a review of a three-story building that's really a series of individual townhomes that has a very residential scale in individual environment that relates to the broad sweep of our three-story building on the northwest side. In the upper right, and some of the images in the middle is looking at, okay, what are the uses of materials here, whether it's masonry or glass or steel or a combination of all of those, all of these, look at those different things, as well as shapes and the way the forms are created. So if you go to the next slide real quick, again, these are just also images that show compositions of different building heights and how they relate to smaller-scale elements. And so we're beginning that process and looking to understand how this relates to the neighborhood, how it creates its own identity and that kind of thing. And then, again, the integration back to the site, the things that we feel are important is creating a great living environment for the residents who will live here, creating something that's identifiable and is good for the community, creating pedestrian connections not only for our project but for the broader community and connections to Southdale and to across 69th, et cetera. And we'll be looking at safety and traffic concerns and looking at the idea, you know, sustainability and open spaces and things like that. So I'll turn it back over to David.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Krish.
And that really concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor and council. We'd be open to your comments, we'd life love to hear them, and any questions that you have that we can further clarify the design, we're happy to provide those as well.
Members break.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the top of the building that's adjacent or across from the Weston, since the residential units on that side start on the eighth floor across the street, so some of those, two of those levels will be looking into your building. On the top, you have this glass, is that, are those, is that the pool amenity on top? So are you looking through two stories of glass?
We're not actually, it's, again, it was more of a graphic diagram in this case. It just represented that maybe we look at differentiating the top floors of the building from the rest of the main mass of the building. In the cases of market rate rental, sometimes we differentiate the top floors from some of the other floors, they do have expanded views and that kind of thing. Again, we're at a stage where we may or may not do something like that, but in terms of where the pool is, we're looking at that in the more privatized interior courtyard. We have open land area where we can build the pool area into the earth and not have to create another structure for that. So also, just in concept, this, that courtyard is diagrammatic as well right now. We will be going through what the actual amenities are for this project, and that will evolve and change a little bit over time here. But it does, the bigger image of entry court and plaza, we have this connector piece in between that's a lower scale, but that represents the main entrance and where the, some of the amenities are, such as the clubroom and fitness and those types of activities that are available to the residents, and then the ability for that to connect to the courtyard in the middle. And we are looking at pedestrian walkways that connect that interior courtyard back out to the other portions of the site.
So as I understand it, those levels would be apartments, so-
Correct.
The Weston units facing north would have a direct conflict on those two levels, as well as the units above that would be looking down onto the site, correct?
Correct. If they, this building is six stories, so they'd be looking down onto that.
Oh, that's six, okay, and then 10 is-
Six, so they'd be above that.
Okay.
And then looking down. Any glances that they got past this, the higher floors you got, would see this landscaped courtyard.
So 10 is on the building?
10 is along York right here.
Part of the, yeah, part of the position of that was intentional in having the lower rise building, the six-story building on the south edge with the 10-story building on the eastern edge do-
Sun studies.
For sun studies in the shadowing or creating a building that doesn't shadow itself. So positioning that was important, and then it opens up the rest of the building and residences for direct exposure to the daylight.
And then how do you envision though, that crossing? Yes, right there, because that looks like there's some major improvements needed on 69th to make that safe. And then you've got, if you go back to the original picture of the street, you have some other odd little infrastructure pieces just to the west of this that you can't, you don't see on your map. So I'm just trying to understand how you envision 69th adapting to this building and the ins and outs and the pedestrian movement, because right now it seems very hostile the way it's designed. I mean, what about, and then as a follow-up to that, what about the potential of a roundabout to bridge the north side and the south side of 69th and make that more connected?
Councilmember Sprague, councilmembers, we would be interested in exploring that with the city if a roundabout is something that the city is interested in looking at. It's actually something that came up in conversation, because one of the things the planning commission did mention about this particular crossing was there was a concern about stacking for the light and would that interfere. This was just an initial idea of where it might- This was just an initial idea of where it might be, simply because of what is across the street. You already have the sidewalk for the Weston there and that throughway to the Galleria and Target. One of the things we may explore as well is possibly moving in this direction, because there already is a crosswalk a little bit further down.
Yep.
And ways to make that connection as well is something we're interested in. This one over here, it was just more making, accessing the existing crosswalks that don't exist now. So, adding sidewalks and an opportunity to get across the street where there are existing crosswalks.
I'm not sure the distance between that entry on the left, down here, and the entry out of the Weston across the street, but it would be nice if you could bridge that geometry.
Sure.
With something like a roundabout and then calm that section. And maybe that free right would have to be modified as well. And then, you'd have kind of a safer block, mid-block crossing.
It's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Member Rindell.
Just a couple of things that actually came up while you were talking, Josh. As a concept, I like what I see. I like it a lot. It will really dress up that corner. We know that rental housing is in demand, and one of the reasons that I think we can know that is there's a building, a new building at the intersection of Highway 177th Street called the Burgundy. And it sat empty for, I don't know, a couple of years while those condominiums were for sale. And the minute they changed to for lease, it filled. And now, the retail on the first level is filling as well. So, that building is an example of the demand of luxury rental housing. So, I think this has, this has a bright future. One thing that I would, knowing that this is a sketch, one thing that I would recommend from the, from the comments that Josh was talking about, I know that when you're looking out from the condominiums in the Weston Tower, that your eye goes far, but then it comes close as well. You might try some green roof ideas with some landscaping trees, park-like setting on the roof of the buildings. And that would hide any of the mechanics that have to go there, that simply have to go there. And it would make it pretty for the area. And I think it would improve, it would improve from a height standpoint, because ultimately, I think we are going to have a variety of heights in the area. So, if we look at not only adorning the, from the street level, but adorning the tops of the buildings as well. My other comment, because I know that there's going to be a lot of changes to the pedestrian flow and the traffic flow as we just massage this thing, and I trust that that'll go through lots of thinking, so I'm not even going to comment on that right now. But the pool being, being just an outdoor pool, we have such a short season for outdoor pools that it struck me that you'd end up with, you know, potentially eight months out of the year, the pool is going to be closed. What is going to be there when the pool is closed? Because conceivably, it's going to be just dry in the wintertime. And is it, are you going to do something that's attractive, because it's kind of in the center? And it has opportunities for beautification if, in fact, it can be something in the winter. But if, you know, if it can be an enclosed pool, it would just be one more amenity that people would want to move in there for. So, but thank you. I like it. It is a corner that is largely empty at Southdale, and it hugs York. And we need nice things to hug York, to make people want to get on both sides of York Avenue. So, that's a, it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson.
I come from a different viewpoint of this. When I first looked at it and spent a long time on the Planning Commission before I came here, this looks to me a little bit more like you've created a really beautiful walled community. And when we talk about redoing things in that area, and we talked about how CBS Pharmacy needed to turn towards the sidewalk, and we didn't care that it came close to the sidewalk because we wanted it to relate to the sidewalk. We wanted to create an area that encouraged walkability. This becomes its own little bear path, to me, in some ways, to be honest. And it doesn't really relate to the roads around it, but it becomes tucked into its berms. And it's an enclave. So, I don't see any podium height relating to either the streets. I don't see a good connection. You know, let's face it, it's on York and 69th Street. It's a busy area. If you're moving there, you know you're moving to a busy area. And you're doing it because it's vibrant and it's busy. I don't like the fact that there's no boulevard created to Southdale. I think one of your biggest assets you have for this piece of property is that it's on the Southdale block. I would expect that you, instead of having a cut through to the berm, you would have a row of trees canopied with a walkway straight over to Southdale, to be honest. I'll talk just about color, even though I know that you didn't intend it to be white, but it looks a little bit like Miami. It's kind of a winter white, and we have enough winter white around here certain months of the year. So, I'm not particularly enamored with that, if that's a color you're considering. That top section of the 10th floor, I like glass, but what I don't want is your exercise studio having ambient light coming out in the middle of the evening, late into the night. What we've discovered is that people don't even like the Weston sign that shines up on the top of the Weston, because it shines all night long. So, they want to be maybe in a busy, vibrant place during the day, but at night, they don't, late at night when they're sleeping, they don't really need that vibrancy coming across to them. I see moving that lot line and not subdividing it so that you don't have to pay a park dedication to use a benefit to you. I'm okay with it not being a PUD, because I, as I said, I don't really need you to even have a very, I can give you that variance to York Avenue. I'd like you to open it up more to York Avenue if it were my choice. But I need you to connect it to the rest of the world. I don't want it to be built with chain-link fence and razor wire on the top, which is, I know you didn't intend it to look that way, and it won't look that way if you built it, but I really, I want it to relate to where it is and not just be, it could potentially be beautiful. You have a lot of landscaping, but I need more relation for it. I need a better connection to Southdale. I'm good with changing the intersection at York and 69th, so we don't have a free right turn, because I think that, again, takes away from that ability to have it accessible both for people going to it and coming from it. I'd be interested in roundabouts if we could solve the issue of getting out of the Weston and getting into U better, because I think that makes sense. And I think we've proved that roundabouts, as long as there are not two lanes going around, and there are only a single lane, people can understand, because that's so far all we've built. So, I'm supportive of doing something here. I'm supportive of not this particular project as you have it designed, but I don't think you're incredibly off the mark. I think you have the right idea. I just need it to not feel so walled.
Sure. Thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. What I like and what I have concerns about, we, in your comments or presentation discussion with the Planning Commission, I noticed that you referenced the Greater Southdale Plan a lot. You should know that that was never accepted by this body. It was received by this body, but we did approve a comprehensive plan since we were having those discussions. That's more recent, and that definitely plans for something like this. It does set the height of 12 stories. It does discuss, have a lot of discussions about mixed use, about bringing into housing into areas that have previously been commercial. I do have one comprehensive plan question, Carrie, and that is on the chart that is, begins on in my copy 427, which is the loose-sleeve copy. When we get to Community Activity Center, which is the Greater Southdale area, first of all, the Florida area ratio doesn't apply, but looking at high-density residential in another area, it talks about, I think, 12 to 30 units an acre, and here, I think, we're talking about 45. So, what, it's more in the nature of a question or concern, what density figure applies? I just noted that difference.
Yeah, those density figures typically relate to our high-density residential, medium-density residential, or, and low-density residential. Low-density residential is, I believe, 1 to 4 units an acre, medium, 5 to 12, and then high-density, anything over 12, 12 units an acre.
It says 12 to 30 on page 427. So, is that an upper number, or is that just...
Yeah, just thinking back to some of the comparisons that we've done on other projects, 40 to 45 units an acre is on the higher end. I think that's similar to the Continental, the high-rise apartments on York to the north. So, it would be, just looking at that site on its own, the splitting this off, it would be on the higher end. But we want to, you know, this is, Southdale is the entire tract, so you could even conceive of the density for the entire Southdale tract, which would be far less.
Sure. And that may fit, I noted that the, some of the Planning Commission members had some questions for you about unit size, and that may fit with the concerns about unit size, understanding that this is preliminary. And I know from moving around the community that we really do have a lot of people who will rent instead of buy or rent prior to buying, and that they come in all ages and family configurations. And so, I can see where having right-sized units is important. I did hear your comments to the Planning Commission about finishes, but just did have that concern, because I did note that, again, it is not just contemplated in the comprehensive plan, it's absolutely embraced by the comprehensive plan. I noticed the different heights. I like the different heights. However, as my colleague has noted, in terms of podium height, not really. The proposed heights are almost a reversal of podium height. You've got the height against the street where, and I know you may put a podium on it, but the effect, I think, is going to be kind of a reversal of podium height, where you have the lowest height, the three stories inside, facing the shopping center, and you have the highest height right on the street. And we really do want people to be able to move around the community comfortably and safely on foot. And against a 10-foot, a 10-story-high wall, that's not going to feel so comfortable, earth berm or no earth berm.
Just...
But you could put a podium on the side of the 10-story building and put your workout area there or something. I don't know.
Sure.
I mean, there's abilities to change how that 10-story building looks by adding a podium to it.
Yes, and I also appreciate the comments about shadow, and I also understand that we've got another view shed that is being protected. I do agree with my other colleague that I think we'll see a variety of heights over the years. But I just, I did notice that. I mean, it's, yes, there's reference to podium height, but I'm not seeing it so much in the design right now. So, both a like and a concern. I noted the comments about things like storm sewer capacity, sanitary sewer capacity, I think that the parking at the shopping center is an issue, because we are just having a new transit station built. And where are park-and-ride folks going to park? So, I think we need some...
Northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Well, but if, right, but we're losing a certain number of spaces, so how do those spaces shift around? I note that there was some mention of park-and-ride. I note that there was one, at least one parking, one Planning Commission member who mentioned that it looks like the answer, if a proof of parking, if it was instituted to address the loss of parking at Southdale, that we would probably be looking at structured parking. And so, there are just things that need to be known, I think, better. And these are the things I'm concerned about. I am concerned about those infrastructure issues. I think we need more answers. I am concerned about the parking. I think we need to know more what the plan is. If there's proof of parking, and I'm not sure, have we ever enacted a proof of parking? I know we have one, but have we actually ever made anybody bill?
We may be in the process of doing that at the Burgundy, where they need more parking spaces, so we may enact our first one.
Okay, okay. But, so we, as a city, don't have the best track record on those.
And where Simon may not have experienced, noted Carrie, I have lived here through several Christmases where you could not find a parking space at Southdale. I would love that to come back. I would love to have a Christmas season and the interest in shopping at Southdale that we had for a few years. And then, we would have to talk about calling a proof of parking, because that would be very exciting.
And I do remember hearing those comments also, so...
Yeah, you would have to go at nine something in the morning to establish your parking place on a Saturday, the weekend before Christmas, because otherwise, you couldn't find one.
Or people who drove through, waved at the mall and drove on.
We'd want them to park at Mall of America, and then we'll shuttle them over.
Right, Mayor?
That's right.
Other concerns.
We're in Perry Center. We'll take it.
Yeah, yeah.
Other concerns. Again, because we can all, I think, anticipate that your residents would come in all ages and family configurations, I noticed that not only this does not contain reference to or planning for any kind of children's play facilities, but a lot of our other places don't. And I think, as a community, we're going to need to start looking at where is, we want to encourage people to move into the area. Where are we going to provide them with facilities for themselves, for their children, and for their grandchildren? We know that facilities get used. Where are we providing them? And again, we want a community that people can move around on foot. If we're inviting people into an area so that they could have a more car-free existence, maybe park away for the weekend and be on foot all weekend, where are they going to walk to for a park? There's also the how-to. I understand that you're working on that, but I share that as well, that concern as well. We not only have the free right coming from York to 69th, but pretty much a free right from 69th into the shopping center. And putting a pedestrian crossing either right before that right or right on that right might end up with a lot of conflict between vehicles and people. There was mention of bike racks at the Planning Commission. We want to make sure that those are included in your plan as it advances, as it gets finalized. And I think one of the things that I'm left with is definitely a need for more design, understanding that you're contemplating that and planning on it. Also, a need for more study, and I don't know how we get to that. I don't, even if, even if there was a request for rezoning, I don't think we would need a grand-view-type small-area plan, because we know that housing is not only contemplated but planned for. We know that your plan is within height, all of that kind of thing. But these other issues, like the sewer capacity, like the storm sewer, like the big picture that was referenced here by Councilmember Sprague and was also mentioned at the Planning Commission, that would be, to me, the elements of a small-area plan and pretty essential, whether you go to a small-area plan or not. These are all things that need to be known.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. When we did the Southdale District Study, I remember being struck by the fact that when you looked at an aerial, it was just a sea of concrete everywhere, not just on the Southdale site, but all through the district. And you could see the potential for what it could be, that it could almost be that entire area, a village onto itself. And if you're going to have a village onto itself, existing between the crosstown and 494 and France and York, you've got to create a lot of livability, and you've got to create green space. And you guys have taken a good stab at it here, and I commend you for that, that this is a vast improvement over a bunch of new Cadillacs being parked over in that corner of the property. And Mr. Dudley, I thank your company for hiring some architects, so that when the word "iconic" is used, can actually produce something iconic, and we challenge you to do that here, because it's, it can be iconic, and it can be extraordinarily important for our community. So, think about that. To me, it looks more like an oasis than a fortress, you know, but we'll work that out, I think, you know, that engaging... the street, I'm just not quite sure how I feel, but I understand Member Swenson's sensitivities to this, that she doesn't want to see buried behind a land bunker. But nonetheless, when I look at the aerial, when I look at the sketch plan, I like what I see in terms of the green space that's been added. The design, I'm really eager to see what you come up with. You've heard comments from all the council members about things that you know about already, in terms of the infrastructure challenges around there. Like Member Swenson, I'm concerned about the lack of connectivity to Southdale, because I think people are going to want to move around on foot. We already see that from having created the promenade, the north connection, northbound connection from Centennial Lakes all the way up behind Target, you know, so it'd be nice to have a way of getting folks into that system. It's our most well-used park, and, and a lot of people that would live in this area are going to want to use it. They're going to want to have, be able to get there safely onto that promenade behind Target, and we've got to figure that out. So you guys can start thinking about that, too. Traffic study, have you done any preliminary traffic study work?
We're just about to start that.
Okay, all right. That's going to be important, you know. I mean, those, those two roads, France and York, carry a lot of traffic, probably 50,000 cars a day, you know, between the two of them. 69th is busy as well. I think York carries 20 to 30,000 already, so we've got to figure this out. And same thing that Member Bennett mentioned with the sewer infrastructure in particular. I think we did something with the Weston that required them to have some kind of a holding tank before it was, it was released into the system so it didn't jeopardize the sewer system, the interceptor system. So you'll have to think about that. Maybe a cost that you don't want, but you need to have, as you, as you look at the number of people that would potentially live here. When I look at the site plan, it's more exciting to me than the, than the, sort of the dummy sketches that you've got to renderings at ground level. I know that you'll come up with something extraordinary. So there's your challenge. I don't need a PUD, I feel like Member Swenson, and we can work with this variance notion. So if we get into the PUD, then you're going to have to show what you're going to give us in return for a PUD, and we're going to be, you know, I don't think we need to go there. We're still going to ask a lot of you, but it's, it's going to be something that benefits you as an owner, and it benefits the city. So I'm pleased that Simon is, has thought about this. The first time that some of us visited with him, they were, they were talking to somebody in Indiana, in Indianapolis. So now I'm pleased they're visiting with somebody in Bloomington.
As are you.
Yeah, so it was a pleasant surprise to see someone local persuade them that he was the right company for the task. And we trust your judgment, I mean, it's your business, you know, you know your business, you've got 5,000 units, we suspect that this then is a fantastic place for what you want to do. I think that's, the density also, for me, is, is fine, you know, the, the level of density, I'm not put off by that level of density, assuming we can, we can handle it from an infrastructure standpoint, and develop some, some great ways to move around, both cars and people, and interfacing cars with people, and getting people around in a non-motorized way. Those are, those are the kinds of things we really need to be thinking about, and that's what all my colleagues have mentioned as well. I really like Mary's idea of the green roof concept, with million-dollar condos across the way. I know they're looking at a parking lot now, as they look north and then look up, they see the downtown Minneapolis skyline, but it would be nice to be looking down on something quite special for them, so. And, and somebody must have visited with Warren Beck, because I understand from some of the owners over at the Weston, he's already circulated your plans, and has told people he thinks it's going to be okay. So I don't know who spoke with him, maybe no one, but he's, apparently he passed around a favorable word on the project already. Good, good for you.
Excellent.
We'll see if that continues. That's it for me. I hope we've been of some guidance to you.
Yes, this has been great. We've had a lot of productive comments, so thank you very much for taking the time.
We don't know Stewart Companies, but we know you guys. We trust your work.
Thank you.
And we want you to deliver the best for us here, and deliver the best for Stewart.
Absolutely.
And you come back to the planning commission, let's see something iconic.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
What an interesting project to respond to.
All right, we are finished with reports and recommendations, and we are now on to correspondence and petitions. Anything other than what we had on the diocese evening? Manager Neil?
Okay, good.
Mayor and council comments, Member Brindle.
Thank you. I have some. This last weekend was the Edina Art Fair, and as I usually do, I hosted the West Information Booth on behalf of Edina Crime Prevention Fund, and we had a good time. We had three beautiful days for the art fair, the first time in 12 years it has not rained, I understand. So we're going to mark that in the record books and get ready for next year with our raincoats, because it won't happen two years in a row, I'm sure. Speaking of the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, on May 31st, last Thursday, the Crime Prevention Fund hosted its first donor reception at the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility. We had probably 45 people there, and there was a demonstration, canine demonstration with diesel and blade, and there was a demonstration in the shooting gallery, and, and then Officer Kevin Raffedall presented a history of the Edina Police Department, which was really interesting, and went back to the days of George Weber standing on the corner of about 42nd and Curve, or 46th and Curve, or whatever. And, and it struck me that Weber Park in Morningside is named after Officer Weber, and there were a couple of wonderful photographs of him. So I thought it would be kind of fun to consider making a plaque, and putting it on a, on some sort of a standard that can be placed at Weber Park, because he was, he was pretty important. And, and he's remembered, actually, by a number of people who, who live in Edina and remember him standing on the corner. Officer Raffedall said that he never, never gave a ticket, but he would, he would advise you, and he actually, there was one story that he actually had a stop sign put in at Curve so he could actually tell people, you need to stop. But it was, it was very fun, very fun to hear the history of the police department, it's a rich history. The annual Fourth of July Parade will be this year on Wednesday, the Fourth of July. The parade will step off at 10 o'clock, it'll go from City Hall to the US Bank parking lot, along Eden Avenue and 50th Street. And if you are out there in TV land, if you are interested in volunteering for the parade, visit the website at edinaparade.org for information. The Edina High School class of 2012 will graduate on Monday.
Target Center.
At Target Center. And they will have their big amazing party that evening, and overnight. And we are hosting a, a young woman who is an exchange student here from Ecuador, so we will be going to the high school probably about 5:00 AM on the morning of the 12th, to pick her up and bring her home, and put her to bed. So, but I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be a great time. Let's see here, just a couple questions I have, and, and I just want to verify the status of the donations policy and the naming and dedication of city facilities policy. I have drafts dated March 27th, 2012. Have we moved forward on those beyond the drafts?
I'm not sure that we have. Karen, do you, do you know if we have at this point? I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
Councilmember Brindle, that's something we can look on and get feedback to.
I looked at them today, and I thought, boy, have we done anything with these? So I thought I would just bring that up.
I haven't seen it in the minutes of the park board. Have you guys seen it in the minutes of the park board discussed?
I was watching the discussion today and got through, I've watched 45 minutes of it so far, but it was presented to the park board.
Okay.
I think it's on its way to you, I just don't know where, if they wanted it back for another review, or if they're just ready to.
I don't know, I just hadn't, I just hadn't heard anything back from that, so I thought I'd ask about it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Yes.
Your trip to New York went well?
The, oh, my trip to New York went very, very well, and this, my field study is that you can't mix pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles, and they do. First Avenue is a bikeway where the bike lanes are separated from the travel, the vehicle travel lanes by a curb. So as a pedestrian, you have to first make sure that you're not crossing in the path of a bicycle, that there's a little pedestrian haven or island, then you again watch to make sure you're not in the path of a vehicle, and then you cross, and, and that's, I, one way, so I didn't see the street with the bike lane going the other direction. But, and my son lives in Queens, near, in Kew Gardens, which is near Forest Hills. He actually lives next to a very, very large park where they have closed the roadway to vehicles, and people are riding on horseback, and they are pushing strollers and riding bicycles. So I saw a lot of New York I didn't anticipate seeing, and just a lot of people moving around in a lot of different ways. So I think we have some encouragement here, that we can also foster that kind of freedom of movement, I think, in our own community. Once I got back, hit the ground running, and was able to attend the first Neighborhood Identification Open House last week. There was an excellent turnout, I thought, at it, and a very presentation made at the beginning of it, and then people divided by quadrant, and went in to look at maps and make suggestions based on their own experiences of neighborhood, where they live, but also the neighborhoods that they are familiar with. And when Assistant Manager Curtis, the next meeting?
The next meeting. The next meeting. There we go. It's been a while since I've done this. The next meeting is July 11th, 6:30 at the Senior Center as well.
And there is no prerequisite required, correct?
No, people can ju, jump in at any time, the final meeting will be on September 12.
Great, thank you. I thought it was very, very well done. It was great to be able to see the process and be able to be a little part of it. Thank you. And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Yeah, we got a letter in our packet from someone on Cahill Road who has trouble exiting their townhouse because of a bush that impedes a sidewalk. Which way would you like me to hand this letter down to Manager Neil? Okay. And then a lot of us were at the chamber, the Edina Chamber, and would love to say nice things about Jennifer Benarat, who was the Businessperson of the Year this year by the Edina Chamber. So we'd like to officially congratulate you from up here, because we are very proud of you. You did a great job, and I was glad to be there. I would have hated missing it. So, congratulations. And then Member Bennett and I got to hear Anita Hill speak yesterday, which was really great. So I'm feeling kind of political now, I, I'm ready to go to see the Black Hills tomorrow afternoon with a five and an eight-year-old, where we're going to bounce off Crazy Horse, too. So we get the presidents, and we get the Indians all in one weekend.
Members break.
I'm up. Well, just thinking of the class of 2012 makes me think, I will have, for my children, the class of 2025, 2026, 2027, and 2028. And then I will have four kids in college at the exact same time. So I'm going to need a raise. Oh, I'm the boss, wait a second, I talked to myself about that. All right, so a couple staff notes here. Do we have any idea when the grand-view survey is going to be conducted, or has it been done? The exit survey?
We are working on the survey. There's a draft of it that's floating around, and we're hoping to get it finalized in the next week or so.
Perfect, thanks. And when will the data be available for the post-70th Street studies?
We're, we're working on compiling those right now, and hopefully that we'll have them for the next Transportation Commission, that will show, show the group what, what we found so far.
Okay. I noted that the fair market value for the art center was, was 850,000, and I'm here to say I think that's low. If you, if you can create four, four lots out of that, residential lots situated back in that nature preserve, I think they're 250 per lot minimum. There's one on the corner, West Shore and 70th, that hasn't closed yet, but that was listed at 200, and that's not as an ideal location, so.
We agree with you.
Okay. And also, on, in the, in the realty vein, I think the Neighborhood Identification Group at some point should hold a focus group with Realtors. There are a lot of resident Realtors from both Edina Realty, Cobble Bank, or any other companies that live in town, that, that have been dealing with neighborhood branding for many years, and probably could be a valuable asset. So you might want to consider that as a focus group opportunity, and we can get the invites out. I met with Carrie Cave, who's the new Director of the Edina Resource Center, and I had a very fruitful conversation. She brought up some, some strategic endeavors that have been on my mind to better align the work of the Resource Center with the school district and the city. And the three points that we, we discussed, one was about communication, specifically what does the city do at the Edina Resource Center to communicate its role and function to new residents who are coming into, to the welcome center there. A lot of new families will make their way into the city for the first time at that location, and I think we should have a communication plan. What, what do we want to deliver, what packet? What are we trying to communicate to those people? What are the important points, and what are the important marketing pieces that we want to get out to them right away? The second thing that we talked about was trying to unify the scholarship programs across the different jurisdictions and associations. So for a, as a resident who needs financial assistance, if they want to participate in an athletic association, or park-and-wreck, or a community ed program, or a field trip at the school or something, could there be one single application to a single fund to help that resident participate in some of these activities where there's demonstrated financial need? And that's something that is being discussed, apparently. The third thing was about trying to get some type of play structure into the park lawn area, and I know that the Lake Edina site has been discussed, and it's some type of flood plan or something, it might not be feasible. But are there alternative sites that our park-and-wrecks department can identify to try to get a play structure in there and get it on the CIP for the future? That comes, comes back to this whole issue of healthy communities, and making sure that we have the right infrastructure in place in all parts of the city, and across all income levels, to make sure people are getting proper exercise, specifically children. I, there was a bike report, bike, from the League of American Bicyclists in Minnesota, was ranked number two in the United States. Did you see that? It's pretty cool. I was grateful to see that. And I think, believe it or not, that's it?
Good, good reporting. It's good to see all of you. I think it's been three weeks since we've been together. On the 16th of May, the day after our last meeting, Manager Neil and I went to the retirement party for John Gunny, the retiring city manager of Minnetonka, and that was a nice event, quite a few folks there. And he's also going to be running for the Three Rivers Park District. Then the next day, I went down to the Convention Center to help RT Ryback kick off the USA Junior Volleyball announcement, or the, actually the announcement of the tournament coming up this summer. On the 21st, which was a Monday, I joined Chief Long and about a half a dozen police officers at the employer support for the Garden Reserve, the ESGR banquet out in Minnetonka. And the City of Edina got one of the top three awards for the state, called the Pro- City of Edina got one of the top three awards for the state called the Pro-Patria Award, and we have been nominated for, I think it is the, is it the Freedom Award, Jennifer? Which is a national award, and there were 30, there were originally, I think, several hundred contestants, and then it went down to 30, and then it was announced that there were going to be 15, and we made the top 15 list. And if we end up being a winner, there will be folks going to the White House. And this is all stemming out of how we deal with supporting our folks like Brandon Cuskey and Kevin Raffedall that get called up at unusual times and not foreseeable how we take care of the people that work for the city when they get called up to active duty. So impressive, I think, Manager Neil, you and everybody here that works on the staff for establishing these policies. I commend you for that work. Let's see, on the 22nd, we had a Dootown meeting, and then Manager Neil and I attended a meeting with some folks from Three Rivers, and I can't tell you that the news was very good, because it seems now that the funding for the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail depends in large part on what happens with federal reauthorization of the transportation bill.
That might be, but they currently have a million dollars that they can't spend on a bridge in Minnetonka, and we should talk to them about that. There is a conflict.
They didn't seem like they had any funds.
There is a conflict somewhere between, somewhere around Minnetonka, St. Louis Park or somewhere, where there is a conflict between light rail and a bike, and the bike trail, and they were, had funding already for a bridge, and they aren't going to be able to use it until it's decided about the light rail. So I was told to actually at that luncheon yesterday to check into that.
Okay.
Mayor, just to clarify on that funding, so when does that bill come up for final passage?
It is, it's a good question. I think it's passed the Senate, and it's a two-year bill, but it's a fraction of what was expected to be in the bill from a monetary standpoint, and there's a de-emphasis on non-motorized.
Active transportation.
So it's, it's primarily a roads and bridge bill. It's, I'll get more detail for you on it. I can get it from the lobbyist for the County Transit Improvement Board and send that out to everybody on the council, but it's, it's challenging. So what the conversation turned to, and this is a bit interesting, all of us should be thinking about this. Larry Black said from Three Rivers raised the notion of, what about if we talked to the park districts, including the Met Council, about creating a regional trail authority? And so all their trails in the seven county metro area would be under this regional trail authority, and we'd have some independent source of funding for it, that we would secure from the legislature, whether it would be in the form of a small slice of, of sales tax, like CTIP, which gets a quarter of a cent. I thought the idea was pretty intriguing, that we start thinking about how to take care of ourselves instead of waiting for something to happen at the federal government level that may eventually trickle down to us and may not.
Don't we run into the same mentality at the state, though?
We could.
Depending on how the elections shake out.
It, but it does still seem to me like it's better to stand on our own two feet if we can. Instead of relying on the federal government to pass a federal reauthorization bill, have that money trickle down to the Highway Trust Fund, go to the Met Council, compete with everybody else for the money, and may or, we may or may not get funded, in whole or in part, and then, you know, kind of keeping our fingers crossed. And now they're out to 2016, 2017 on the, on the funding cycle. So I, I think this regional trail authority is something worth thinking about and exploring a little bit. Anyway, we'll give it some, please give it some thought and see if it appeals to you at all.
What about, what about Three Rivers Park District bonding for a phase or something?
They're bonded out.
Okay.
They're, they're maxed out on the bonding they can do. That was a, the first question, I think, of Manager Neil, I asked, what about, what about your bonding capacity?
This is such an important linkage, I mean, for the whole system, not just Edina.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can't wait till 16 or 17, 2016, 2017, and that's still an unknown. I think we should try to control our own destiny a little bit better.
Maybe Green Machine should do a fundraiser. They're pretty enthusiastic.
I did the State of the City, Mini State of the City over in the Country Club neighborhood, at one of their country club parties on the 23rd, and then on the 24th, I went with Bill Cirks, and Manager Neil couldn't join us, he had some family issues. But we, we received, yeah, they were, we had, we walked away with one of the big prizes over there at the, the Environmental Initiative Awards down at the Nicollet Island Pavilion. We won in the energy conservation category for our PACE program that we set up, and it was a bittersweet victory. We nosed out the Fair Bowl Willenbill, which is owned, of course, by two guys from Edina. So, I tried to get them to come up on the stage with us, but they didn't want to do that. And then we, then we came back up twice more. The overall winner that they voted on that night was Green Step Cities, and of course, we're a pilot program for Green Step Cities, so back up we went again. It was, it was quite an exciting night for Edina. And then, of course, Member Brindle mentioned the art fair kickoff. That was mid-morning. Earlier that morning, Superintendent Dresson and I went to Creek Valley for a wellness event, did our Dootown dance gig over there with the kids. But over at the art fair, I'll tell you, I, I'm surprised Mary's still awake here tonight. I was over there at 9:30 in the morning, and she was at the information desk. I came back that night to get something needed about 7 o'clock, and she was still at the information desk. So I don't know how many hours you put in over there helping people with directions, but it must have been quite a bit.
10 to 7, 10 to 7, 10 to 5. But I did leave here and there each day for, for a couple errands, but it's a lot of fun. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun. People are there to have a good time, and the weather was so good that people were just happy to be there.
Good. That's all I've got. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. You're live tonight on, all over the world on the World Wide Web, and also on local cable access television, Channel 16.
But not on an iPad.
But not on an iPad, but, but for the rest of the world, you're, you're live, and they are enjoying our council meeting tonight.
You think we'll end up with a million hits like the robotics team?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Just a couple of things. One, Ann Catry and myself and our peers from St. Louis Park were invited to meet with the Director of Public Works for the City of Minneapolis. Over the years, I think the council's aware that, that both cities, St. Louis Park and Edina, have made inquiries to the City of Minneapolis about the future of the Waterworks site. They have given some interest in, in leasing the property to, to the cities. They have, I think, considered selling the property to the cities. There was an analysis, however, that, that they needed to go through over the last year to determine the long-term use of that property, if they needed it at all. The Director of Public Works told us that they have reached the conclusion that they don't need to own that property, and that they do plan to move forward with selling it. And he asked both of us, the city manager, Tom Harmoning from St. Louis Park, and myself, if we had any municipal interest in possibly acquiring this site. We didn't. It was kind of an on-the-spot thing, although we've had enough discussion, I think, here that I think we have some interest. Depends on the price, of course, but St. Louis Park had the same response. Based on that response, the Director of Public Works, Steve Kotke, is going to move forward with having the property appraised. They, they have a requirement in their charter in Minneapolis that they sell property at market rate, so they will be appraising this property. We don't have any kind of a timeline for when this is going to happen, although he said that he would like to begin the process of wrapping, wrapping this up sometime this summer. So that's all really I know about that at this point. We will seek updates from, from the city during the summer, but that's the next step in the process, is for them to appraise, appraise the property.
We recommend you give them the appraisers at the New York Center.
I will do that. And I did have a, a great walk through the site with Councilmember Bennett, and got to see, we saw the whole site, and we met people out there walking their dogs and riding their bikes, and it was a nice, that was a nice walk. I'm glad I got to do that with you. We have been waiting for a chance to take final action on the cable TV franchise agreement with Comcast. That agreement is in its final stages now. The final details are being worked out by the legal counsel on, from Comcast and also from, from the South Metro, what are we called? The Southwest Cable Commission. And those cities are now going to be getting a presentation from Brian Grogan, who is the legal counsel for the Cable Commission, and he is scheduled to come do his presentation for the Edina City Council on July 17th. So look forward to that. And we will give you a written briefing about what the changes in the franchise might be. If that's not ready yet, but, but as they finish it up, you should have an advance look at that before it comes to you. We had an innovation today in our Human Resources Department. You now apply for jobs with the City of Edina online. So we had our first, we accepted our first online applicants today. That process really begins now, a whole modernization of, of our HR systems online, and particularly how we handle applicants and updating them on our process and telling them they got a job or they didn't get a job. All of that we're going to be handling online now. So we will be continuing to kind of handle some paper applicants, applications during a transition period, but that's the direction we're moving in, and I think that's going to work nicely. We have, I believe, a, a need for a closed session with the council to talk about the Benner mediation. And we're conferring with Tom Scott, the lawyer in the city attorney's firm who represented the city in that mediation, and we'd like to do this at the, at the next council meeting, so in, on June 19th. And we may do it, we may try to do it prior to the work session. So we may, we may try to do it from 5:00 to 5:30. We're, we need to confer with, with Mr. Scott, but, but just want to let you know that that one, that issue is also moving forward towards you. The, as you know, we had some, some violations of, of the most recent police liquor compliance testing in, in some of licensed establishments in town. One of those, the Barrio, has paid its fine, but wishes to appeal its suspension. And they will appear before you. They've asked for, they have a right to an appeal to, directly to the council. They are going to be on the agenda, at the end of the agenda, actually, at your next council meeting. So if we have any material from them in advance, we'll share it with you. There really isn't an obligation for them to do that. We don't, I don't, if we, but if we get something, we'll share it with you in advance of the meeting. Finally, the city has had, for a number of years, and I, I don't know when, a relationship with Kathy Iverson as the chemical health specialist. It's not a very well-documented relationship in terms of just employment status and so forth. So Kathy and I met last week, and we're going to document that relationship in a memorandum of understanding. And so we kind of, we put, we're not changing it necessarily, just documenting what it is she does and what her relationship is with the city, so. And that's all I have for you.
Good. Oh, there was another historic moment made this last weekend that you all should know about, as I became the first council member since 1888 to complete an Olympic triathlon.
Buffalo?
Buffalo. So mile swim, 25-mile bike. You were there, I didn't see you. Six-mile run, two hours and 20 minutes.
I would have been watching.
Hey.
If I, if I have an Edina flag, I will carry it across the finish line for, for everyone, for the glory of Edina, but I need a flag or something. So Jennifer Bennerott, when you find a vendor that can stream video on an iPad, also find me a flag, and I will take it across the finish line. Flag first.
So you swam with the ducks instead of the swans?
Correct.
Okay.
Well then, Member Bennett?
Two quick things. Regarding the redistricting and the, I was, it was more than suggested to me last week that the city appeal that, or that there is some action that the city...
Glad you brought that up. I meant to talk to Clerk Mangan about that, so. I had the same suggestion made to me.
Member Bennett, Mayor, we would have had to have anything through the court system by the first of June. There are no changes to anything in 2012 after June 1st.
Okay.
And so we consulted with, with Attorney Knudsen, and there really is no case law where somebody's appealed the redistricting of a five-gen panel. We can go back. Unfortunately, the veto letter, the way it was written, alluded to that, but we will go back to the 2013 legislature and ask to have the same special legislation passed again. And we have been, we have been led to believe that it will not be, meet the same fate it did this year.
Thank you, but for this, for this election, the
We're done.
The line stands in the
Right.
middle of the hall. And we will be posting inscriptions.
We will, the county will mail to every registered voter in the next few weeks notices, but of those areas of change that we had, and there were several in Edina, we will be sending a more specific letter to every address, not just every registered voter.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, and the second thing, not referencing or the conversation previously about the dome, I don't want to ask too many questions, Manager Neil, but I do know that that Waterworks site, which runs along 40, runs along France Avenue, from about north, north of the water holding pond that's north of 42nd Street to the border and beyond with St. Louis Park, that that site has been looked at and discussed as a potential location for a dog park, an off-leash dog park. And what I am asking is that if that use is to be discussed in Edina, it's been discussed by the City of St. Louis Park. They've had open houses that they've notified Edina of Morningside, and it's been open to Edina residents, also Minneapolis. Just that if we are going to look at that or discuss it as a city, I'd like to request that we...
For some dog parks?
Yeah, that we have, that we have.
A dome?
Not, not, no, 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 no. I just said that I was, I was referencing that early discussion about property purchase, and not trying to get too specific, but the dog parks, since that's actually been discussed for over 12 years, I thought that I could be specific about that one.
You can.
And I think that there are a number of people who would like to have some input on that, if that's something that the city is going to look into at all.
Boy, I was nervous there for a moment. I thought the, all your neighbors in Morningside would get the word that Joanie Bennett was interested in a sports dome at the, at the Waterworks site.
No, no. Not, not at all. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Stand if you're in.
You must have missed a segue there, because...